Oh, you might need them and I liked them so.
Ida, I got you next to me now.
Oh, that's right.
Ah, nothing, I'm not talking. I needed your help desperately.
You did?
Yes, I called you off.
I passed on the coffee.
I called you off, but then I got hydrated.
I did, I did.
Oh, yeah, well, I wasn't that desperate.
It wasn't, no, I'm just teasing. How are you this morning?
I'm good. I'm great.
That's good.
We're through with Christmas things for workshop.
Oh, you're okay, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep gathering.
No, no, I mean, like, the thing.
You know what we're gonna do?
Oh, nobody told me.
Well, we said we're gonna do, uh, having had a chance to talk to Ruben or you, to say, would you wanna just all do a hundred dollars?
Okay. Well, I definitely agree with that.
Oh, yeah, we should have given candles, we want our candles, of course.
Okay, I feel like candles and the hundred dollars.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Who'd I get the hundred dollars?
Um, let me talk with, let me, um... Get you one, one friend, and I'll find out, because I think they have a futures meeting. Well, we want to be able to hear that from the board, and, and I want to ask her what she wants to hear, Mark, that, that's my reason. So, let me call her and then I'll make an announcement.
Well, whatever, whatever you need for your dish.
Okay.
Well, all right, well, I'll have to bring my things here for the regular meeting, because I don't have time, I only got five minutes left, probably have time to give him.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Closer today.
No, we're, because we've got two people on this, we're good. We're, no, no, you're good. I just said, if I, I'm like, I, I'm used to, Ida's been here next to me now, she's over there, so I'm like, Linda, we might be a little closer today.
And made sure to wear your perfume and everything, so it's a little nice for the company.
It's this thing. How are you this morning?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
Doing good.
You have a busy couple of days coming up.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I'm, I'm always busy, so. Yes, I do, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's right, she sure will.
That's good, I, I've got good, good bumpers on both sides, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna give this to you, those are some certificates that you will need to sign for, uh, the Teach of the Year. I've already signed.
Amy.
I will sign them right after the work session, we'll get going on it. Do you need them back before the work session?
No, we'll give them to Connie. Okay, come on over.
Girl, I don't know.
This is Erin Leben.
Hi, Erin.
Very nice to meet you, yeah, welcome to board. Yeah, how exciting. I want to be a part of it.
Did you, did you ever, because I take any depictions with me? Man, that was pretty special until you said that. Now, you never had one with me, because if you had a depo, with me, you would.
I would never forget.
She was like, perplexed.
You sure? Okay. Good morning, we'll call our December tenth meeting to order, our workshop. At this time, I'd like to take a moment just to introduce the days. To my left, I have Mr. Carl Persis, representing District Four. Mr. Ruben Cologne, representing District Five. Mr. Ted Doring, School Board Attorney. To my far right, I have Mrs. Connie Spire, our Agency Clerk, and our outgoing, beloved, gonna lose, agency clerk, and Mrs. Erin Leben, our new Agency Clerk. Good morning, Mrs. Leben, thank you for joining us. Ms. Jamie Haines, representing District One. Mrs. Linda Cuthbert, our Vice Chairman, representing District Three. Our new Superintendent in his very first workshop and meeting, Dr. Scott Fritz. And I'm Ida Wright, Chairman, District Two. We're gonna move right into our workshop, and Superintendent Fritz, I believe we have two point zero one rezoning.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to call up Ms. Sarah Lee Morrissey, Director for Planning and Business Services, and Mr. Eric.
Greg Aiken, our Chief Operating Officer, is going to join us.
Sitting way over here. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Fritz, welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
I hope we don't disappoint you. So, to get us going, um, this morning is a follow-up to the conversations that we had in November, regarding two specific rezonings that we were bringing forward to the Board to, um, to discuss. This particular presentation, um, may or may not address all of your questions and/or concerns or comments, but certainly, as we move forward with our discussion this morning, should it become necessary to come back and have more detailed conversation about either something we touch on today or perhaps something we've missed, we, of course, will be happy to do that. So, moving forward, uh, let's first make sure that, um, we understand attendance zones, because it has been a long time since the School Board, uh, made any modifications to our attendance zones. The School Board has a policy, it's School Board Policy two oh two, which addresses attendance zones. In the most simplest, simplistic, uh, statement, an attendance zone is basically a geographic area that's been designated for students to attend a specific school, and that specific school is based on the student's primary residential address. Why do we have attendance zones, uh, and certainly there are districts and/or schools that may not have an attendance zone, maybe a total school of choice. But here in Volusia, all of the traditional K-12 schools have an attendance zone associated with it. The attendance zones can help us plan for enrollments, um, plan to balance not only the enrollments, but the demographics associated with those enrollments, and it helps, um, it should help us, um, have a somewhat predictable, uh, future. And certainly, when perhaps we start to see things changing, that may be one of the times where we start to question whether or not there should be a modification to an attendance zone. As I said, the, it's been a long time since the School Board has modified any attendance boundaries, but why would we change those? Certainly, uh, the traditional, uh, reason has been because we've built a new school, and there's at least one, if not two or three, schools that are overcrowded, uh, and that new school was built to relieve them, and so we're undertaking a redistricting associated with that. But there's other reasons for a boundary change, perhaps there's a school closure, perhaps there's a, a change in grade configuration. At a school, uh, when Holly Hill, uh, changed to a K-eight, that was combined with the closure of Holly Hill Middle School, and, uh, we did, uh, quite an extensive redistricting then of the entire Central Halifax area, both at the elementary level and the middle school level. Attendance boundaries and, and feeder patterns, we're going to talk about that. Uh, we've got a good example to show you of, um, uh, whether or not a feeder pattern is deliberately, um, making sense or not. What is a feeder pattern? So, the feeder pattern would be that, uh, the elementary school zone feeds to School X, Middle School, School Y, High School. I can tell you that in Volusia, um, we have examples of very clean feeder patterns, and we have examples where there are not clean feeder patterns. I'm going to show you one of those today. We also have many examples where a school, um, an elementary school could be split zoned to a middle school, meaning, um, the elementary boundary may in fact feed to more than one middle school, uh, may in fact feed to more than one high school, and we have many examples of that. Certainly, the demographics of the area, the number of schools in the area can influence whether or not it's a, a clean feeder pattern. And as I mentioned, um, the demographics, balancing demographics, looking at utilization of our schools, um, the, um, uh, I wanna say oh nine, might have been oh ten, we did a redistricting of the entire Port Orange Elementary School area, South Halifax, and that was solely to balance utilization. We might look at programs, um, how programs feed to specific schools. Perhaps when we do an attendance boundary change, we need to also look at the feeder pattern associated with specific programs. Needless to say, uh, when we undertake boundary changes, they can be received positively or negatively by our communities. So, let's talk a little bit about what some of the impacts are when we're changing an attendance zone. Certainly, uh, there's, there's a number of stakeholders associated with attendance boundary changes, and our students are, of course, our primary. What could happen? Students may go to a totally new environment, uh, a new school, maybe they know people there, maybe they don't. Maybe their teacher is going to that new school, maybe the teacher is not. Change in, uh, transportation route, um, possibly even a change in, um, arrival time and dismissal time. Certainly, when we opened the K-eight, um, some of our, um, families and students saw a change in time going from traditional middle school to now a K-eight. The school itself, uh, if the demographics change dramatically, it could mean a change in, uh, uh, eligibility or lack of eligibility for federal programs, Title One funding. We can see, uh, um, other demographic changes, both in terms of, uh, race and/or socioeconomic changes, and we try to, um, to the extent possible, uh, keep it somewhat consistent with what the community is, but we do have some neighborhoods that are not, uh, similar to the community itself, and, uh, so then a decision becomes, uh, and we can talk about that on one of our examples, whether or not we're sending students to our closest school, or perhaps a school that's further away. Parents and the community, um, depending on the nature of the rezoning, and like I said, we have a couple of examples here, the process that we use may be different, but certainly, a, um, redistricting that impacts a number of our families and students, we will do our very best to, um, provide numerous methods of communication, as well as community meetings, and certainly advance notice. And then last, one last, uh, one last piece is working internally within the district. We have a number of departments that can be affected by, um, a redistricting, certainly within the Operations Department, and in fact, um, how my relationship with Mr. Aiken, uh, began was when he was Student Transportation Director, and we worked on a number of redistrictings together. So, uh, we can't move forward without transportation. Ultimately, planning needs to involve schoolway cafe, depending on what the numbers, uh, associated with enrollment will do. As I said before, federal programs, uh, and curriculum in general, working with, uh, HR. Depending again on what enrollment does, what's the implications to staffing. So, there's a number of internal departments that we also need to work with. So, what I wanted to do at this point is, uh, I always like, when I do presentations, is to kind of take us clockwise around the county, so I generally do start with, uh, our Halifax planning area. And, uh, what Eric and I did was, um, we'll, we'll talk to you in general terms about the specific planning area, and then, um, um, we may, uh, where we have an example of something that we either should be considering, if not now, something for the future, um, we will bring that up and we can have some discussion on that. So, let's start with the Halifax planning area. Certainly, uh, if, if, if you've driven around particularly Central Halifax, you can see all kinds of signs of the economy booming. We have lots of construction going on in the Halifax area, and in particular, Central Halifax. Lots of apartments, uh, under construction. We have, uh, planned for some of that, uh, I know you know, but, um, for the benefit of Dr. Fritz, I may, I may repeat myself in terms of providing the Board some information, because I, I want to ensure that Dr. Fritz understands some of what goes on in our communities. So, in planning for some of, um, our enrollments, we added capacity at West Side Elementary, and I know you know the new, new project there. Some of that increase in capacity was looking at Champion Elementary. Champion Elementary is our school west of Interstate ninety-five, it was the replacement for Hurst Elementary, we moved it west. There's also a lot of single-family construction west of ninety-five. There's also a, a very high number of, uh, ESE program units at Champion. So, one of the things, uh, that we planned for was a movement of our, um, multi VE students who are at Champion, who are zoned to West Side, to come back to their zone school. And that would help us with some classroom space, uh, not as much as I had hoped, but some classroom space. But also recognizing, um, the impact of a lot of those apartments. Those apartments are happening in the Champion Zone, the West Side Elementary Zone, as well as Palm Terrace. So, the good thing about that particular type of development, it's, it's spread out, it's not focused on just one school. In the Halifax area, we've been unfortunately impacted by opportunity scholarship, and that has necessitated, uh, offering, um, um, transportation, and, um, um, it's very similar to what existed under No Child Left Behind, uh, the offer for transfers with transportation to other schools. So, for the past two years, we've done that at Palm Terrace Elementary. I do express a little bit of concern this next summer, because we have, um, two schools, Champion and West Side, that if, uh, another, um, D-letter grade, uh, is received, will now have to, um, offer opportunity scholarship at that two, those two schools. So, that could influence enrollments and capacities at, um, at, at area schools. Now, I wanted to take a minute to talk, uh, about something that now is unique to, um, the Halifax area, and that's the issue of islands, and I'm asking Eric to zoom in. In the core area of Daytona Beach, uh, south of Mason, east of Nova Road, west of US One, and pretty much north of Bellevue. That is a, uh, a core area that, um, what we, they, the attendance zones there are sometimes referred to as islands. They're relatively small attendance boundaries, and these attendance boundaries are associated with a school that is not, uh, necessarily the closest school to where these children reside. These attendance zones are reflective of decades of, um, the nineteen fifty-four Brown v Board of Education, and the efforts of many school districts, including Daytona, uh, Volusia County, to desegregate our schools. So, um, what you have here are elementary schools, and right now, we have about eleven or twelve, uh, what I'm going to refer to as islands, uh, within that core area. Now, over the time that Greg and I, uh, Greg and I have been working together, we have tried to address, um, islands to the extent that, um, we can send children to a school that's closer to their residence, and the school that was associated with that island is diverse without requiring an island to make it diverse. So, we, we have made a few changes, um, but those were opportunities that were associated with, um, our efforts of, uh, looking at, um, I mentioned earlier, South Halifax and Central Halifax, when we were doing wholesale redistrictings. We took the opportunity to look at this specific issue, and we just addressed a couple, so we still have quite a few.
We reduced three.
We reduced, okay, um...
Wait, can we take, go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yes.
All right, um, I wanna ask a question prior to the island discussion. When you showed that we're building additional apartments in that area, do we know what type of apartments? Do we know, are they higher-priced apartments, are they section, gonna take Section Eight? Do we know what type, you know, are going in?
Go ahead, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, uh, when we do the reviews, the, um, price point is not part of that, but the majority of what is going in, uh, along the Williamson, um, corridor, is going to be market rate. Uh, I am not certain about, uh, the area in, uh, Palm Terrace off of Dunn. I have not seen enough information on that yet.
To date, uh, usually when, um, the, uh, developers are availing themselves of public financing in order to make the apartments affordable, that information is known during the, uh, time that they are moving forward with, whether it's a zoning change at local government or just site plan, and we do know that. Like, like Eric said, we've not seen any of the develop, uh, the developments to date offer that. Primarily, the focus right now is, um, multi-bedrooms, um, which, of course, concerns us, uh, and we have seen our student generation rate increase in multifamily, but they're not necessarily being marketed as affordable.
Do we know yet the size that these are going to be, like, how many units are going to go into each one?
We can get that information during, um, from the local government, once they go through their building permit.
Okay, and then the homes that are being built west of I ninety-five, I'm assuming that they're going into those subdivisions that are already existing there, such as LPGA, and the piece that's by Champion and all of that, is that what we're talking about, the single-family construction?
Yes, on, on the map here, what is highlighted in yellow are areas that are actively being, um, constructed with, uh, single-family. We're showing Minto or, uh, Latitudes.
Right.
Which is, uh, age restricted, but it's still there, so I wanted to show it.
But it does nothing for us, we don't even get impact piece from Latitude, so.
Right. I just didn't wanna leave it off.
Right.
In case there was a question on it. Then we have, uh, Mosaic, that is, uh, next to Bayberry and, um, Champion. And we have a couple more infill that have been, have recently come to us. Uh, not infill, uh, part of the LPGA, and, um, south of, uh, Bayberry, but they're not affiliated with that.
Do we have numbers on how many homes they're looking at building in each of those? And I, I understand it can be a three-year, a five-year, a ten-year phase, depending on the amount of property they have and how they're gonna build it out, but do we have numbers yet?
Yes, every time we do a review, uh, I get the number of units that they're planning on building in that phase, and, um, I did not bring all of the numbers for all of the, um, county, but I do have...
Part of, um, um, twice a year, uh, and this is associated with our inter-local agreement for public school facility planning with all of the, uh, local governments. Twice a year, we meet with the city planners from all the local governments, and one of the required pieces of information from them to Eric is on, um, building permits and certificates of occupancy. Because part of what he's tracking is not just the number that are getting approved, but that absorption, and, you know, um, planning for how the students are going to show up, if, in fact, projections are accurate.
So, my latest numbers on the, uh, west, west side of ninety-five, the single-family there, was about one thousand seventy-seven. That, that is previous numbers, um, I'm not sure what the current is today. This was from our, um, meeting in October, I believe, with our...
With the planners?
Uh, planning organizations.
So, you said one thousand seventy-seven single-family homes being built in that highlighted area that's west of ninety-five?
Correct, and that, that is not one thousand seventy-seven homes under construction right now.
Right, I understand that.
One thousand seventy-seven planned for, yes.
Now, does that number include latitudes, or is that number just include?
That is outside of latitudes.
Outside of latitudes, okay. Outside of latitudes, okay.
Yeah, because I believe Mosaic is about 680 homes that will be going to Mosaic. The remaining should be going to LPGA, and if they decide to finish developing some of Bayberry, Burrberry, whatever it's called, Bayberry, there may be another 125 in there, so.
May I ask?
Sure.
So, now on to the islands. I think to be clear, since some of us here understand the islands and some people don't know anything at all about the islands, I think we need to be a little, like, give a little bit more details about the islands so that everybody truly has a real picture of what's happening there. And, you know, my understanding of it is, there we have Campbell Middle School and Turi T Small sitting there, and the streets right, you know, in front of Campbell Middle, I mean, I watched it happen years ago when I had to drive into EDC. You have 10 homes, and these four kids walk to this corner and get on a bus, you know, these four walk to this corner, and these four walk to this corner and get on a different bus going to a different school, and these two may just get on a bus, or they may get to stay in their neighborhood. Because you said we're still at 11 to 12 schools that we are busing just that few streets out to?
Yes.
What's hard for me, and what's always been hard for me on that, is that we chose to put them out at so many schools. So, we can be living right next door to each other, and I walk this way and get on a bus and go to Tamoka. She walks that way and gets on a bus and goes to Horizon. So, we don't even go to school together, but then we come back home and we spend more hours at home and in our neighborhood together, but we don't attend school together. So, I just have struggled with the way, I mean, I know why it was done, just the why so many schools? Like, because to me, we're taking apart a community by doing that. Like, why couldn't we just say, okay, at least everybody on this side of the street or whatever, at least all go to the same elementary school together instead of, you know, we're at different, we don't see each other all day, and then we come home and, but that's just, and I know that, I know that's ITA's district, but, you know.
No, I'm the chair, so I'm keeping all my comments to the end.
But, you know, I drove in and out of that neighborhood every day for several years, and I watched those students, you know, and I just, because how do we build a community when, you know, four of you go here, and five of you go there, and six of you go here, and, and we're not building a community? So, that's just my opinion on that.
Colleagues, do you all have any more comments on this particular, at this point? No? Carl, no? Lundas?
No.
No? Okay. So, I will deal with Halifax while we're here. This has always been a bone of contention for me. First of all, I don't like calling them islands. They don't live on an island. They live in Daytona Beach. I hate that. But that's just me. And we do, we have children, if we look at this map, it's probably the only place where we really do bus children to help with diversity, and that's really unfair to those neighborhoods. It's unfair to the children because they, they leave there and they either go to Port Orange Elementary, Horizon Elementary, Tamoka Elementary, Champion Elementary, Pathway Elementary, because my children went to Pathway, a 45-minute ride to and from home. That's an hour and a half. And I don't care what nobody at this day says. That's unfair to those children, especially the elementary. And I understand diversity. I truly understand. I understood the intent of the law, but most people really don't understand, so I'm gonna educate you a little bit. The reason the law came about is because the young lady was bused out of her neighborhood. She was not allowed to go to the school in her neighborhood. Then when we had the segregation, one of the big issues was they didn't allow the principals and the teachers who were at the segregated schools to go to predominantly white schools. Currently, of all the teachers in America, 4 million in public school, only 6% of them minorities. But at one time, it was 37%. So, this, when we decided to do segregation, it actually negatively impacted African-American communities because they did not allow the teachers and the principals to go with the children when they wanted to help segregate schools, and we're right back where we started. And I know many proponents are saying, you know, well, we're going back to segregation. It's not that we're segregating. I just think children in elementary school should be educated in their communities, and they should look and be able to reflect. It has nothing to do with race. I don't, I just want the best teachers. And so, when we talk about schools in this area, if we had the very best teachers, the very best resources, they would perform just like any other school. And so, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I really, Sarah Lee and Greg and Dr. Fritz, we really need to look at this. That was one of my things when I came on the board. I did not like the fact that our children in 32114 had to be bused all over Volusia County, and yet, we're not busing anybody back in to help segregate those schools. They're still all predominantly black. We're not busing any white children from Orme, or Port Orange, or New Smyrna to any of those schools to help with segregation. So, I don't know if we're really being, and not you, I just don't know if we're being genuine when we say we want to segregate schools because it's not being reciprocated on any other platform in this county.
So, as always, when there's a topic that's new to me, I have to do a lot of research, and I've done a lot of reading as it relates to exactly what you're talking about there. And there are, when we talk about rezoning, you know, looking at top districts in the country who have gone through this, they have gone away from a map type of rezoning to a socioeconomic kind of rezoning. And exactly what you're describing is exactly what they are talking about, and it's not the sending them out, it's the fact that there's not that balance. And so, you know, while I appreciate the presentation, and I've gone through it, and I've had a real hard time because I, I didn't even realize how many of my, I've never really seen a true map, and try finding one, it's kind of hard, and I'll get with you, we can get offline on that one. But, you know, when, when we talk about the rezoning, I'm not even thinking geographically, and if you, and I'll share these articles that I've been reading where they, it is not, okay, this block of schools goes here. It is, who is in that block? How is that gonna impact? How is that going to, is it gonna bring it up? Is it gonna bring it down? Who are the students? What are the, what's the true data that's driving the decision versus just the map? And you hit a good point because the reality is that the intent was to not have the same schools, you know, kids in the poverty in their neighborhood, but there has to be that balance. And I usually try to stay my world in Deltona Enterprise and Osteen, but when I have been to Turi T, I've been to Westside, I've been to those schools, and one of the principals said to me, "Reuben, think of your poor school." And so, I thought of my poor school. They said, "Your poor school looks nothing like this." And it's not only its facilities, its cleanliness, it's, and so, there's a lot of things that play, and so, as I, as I've done a lot of reading, the map probably, in this day and age, has least to do with the rezoning than the actual folks who are gonna be affected. And so, you know, I've shared this with Dr. Fritz, and he's, he's agreed to take it back to the team because what I said was, I want to see an independent from our curriculum department report on how these changes will affect. I've spoken to my principals who, of which, had no idea this was even a conversation, and they shared with me some of their concerns and opportunities, et cetera. And so, I think that if we have that look at it, other than, here's a map, okay, we have too many kids here, I mean, Champion, you know, why is Champion where Champion is right now? We're not gonna say that out loud, okay? However, the reality is to think that a kid's going from Turi T all the way to Champion, and what I learned about Champion is, they have to go, if they want to do something at the school, they've, we literally should be sending buses to pick up those parents so they can come participate at their kid's school. And so, again, not getting on the soapbox, I agree with Ms. Hane, I agree with you, it's just, I just think that the way we need to look at this rezoning, if we're gonna cross that bridge, is totally different than we ever have. And there's a lot of data out there to support, you know, different thought processes other than geographic. That was all.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I agree, but there's a few pieces I disagree on, and this is where I come back Our kids have a right to be educated with the children that they live with. No matter where I've lived, I have moved my kids to whatever the school is in that zone when they were growing up because I wanted them, when they came home, to be able to play out in the yard or next door with the neighbor's kids and have those relationships. And the other thing I can tell you is, all those years that I did summer programs and had to work with transportation on the feeder patterns for summer programs, my biggest thing has always been not having students on a bus for extreme lengths of time. Because little kids riding a bus for 45 minutes or an hour is not the answer. But the heartbreaking piece is, I was at Freedom Elementary one summer, and a mom walked in, and she said, "This is one of the schools of choice, so I'm gonna choose next year to put my child at this school." And I said, "So, why are you making that choice? Like, are you displeased with the school that you've been at?" She goes, "No, I love the school we're at. I love the teachers." I'm like, "Then why are you choosing to move your child? My child's gonna be on the bus for an hour and 20 minutes approximately. I won't need after-school care." Okay. We have got to put children first in whatever decisions we make. Kids need to be close to home, in my opinion, and you guys can tell me, I mean, you can, we can agree to disagree, but think of when you grew up. I mean, I lived in a lot of different cities in the early part of my life because of what my father did, but I wasn't gonna make friends with somebody at school that then lived in a whole different community and not, I wouldn't see him until I went back to school. You know, think about what you just said about, we bus kids out to Champion, but yet their parents can't get there for activities because they don't have a way. It's like our McGinnis families. Like, if we were to close McGinnis Elementary, and I've heard rumors of that effect, and I don't agree with it, how, and bus those kids either north to Pearson or south into Deland, how are those families gonna get to the school for the activities? Like, I think we've gotta look at our kids and our families and what works for them because we've got parents out there that have no form of transportation.
And so, I agree with what you're saying in my heart of hearts, but the reality is that the evidence shows something different. And so, again, and again, and in healthcare, when they come up with something that's evidence-based, you know, a lot of times, it makes me cringe because it's like, this is the way we've always done it. But the evidence shows that students, when they go to a better-performing school, do better. Students, and so, again, I, I think, and so, what I would implore is to try to strike that balance of the two, and I think Ms. Wright made a very good point. You know, yeah, you're sending some of them away, but the majority of them are staying there, and we're not, there's no integration. There is no balance. There is no uncomfortable balance. I'll use that term because this is a very sensitive subject. It's something that I almost don't want to say a whole lot on, even though I haven't shut up. But, you know, the reality is that, and I shared the article with Dr. Fritz via email, and if he sees appropriate, he could share it with the rest of us because I know this is something we may be voting on. But the evidence supports that socioeconomic versus geographic, you know, test scores and all that good stuff. So, again, it's striking that balance. I just, again, looking at this presentation, and again, this is not to you all, this is kind of the way we've always done it, I would, I think we could challenge the thought process.
And so, with, with that said, I do want them to finish, but I'll say this, I think I could find actual research to support anything any of us are saying. The fact of the matter, let's deal with the realities we have in Volusia County. And so, when you have children who live, who go to school in Horizon, they can't stay after school, they can't get tutoring, they can't, the parents can't go to the summer pro, I mean, go to the evening programs. So, socioeconomic, race, gender, whatever it is, we gotta do what's best for our children. And so, with that in mind, I still think, you know, we were supposed to have some center set up where the children who were bused out were able to come back and then have tutoring, and we've yet to do that. And so, when we start redirecting money, and I can guarantee you, if we looked at what we're doing, transportation, we'll save some money on transportation, we probably need to then take that money and reinvest in the schools. And if we need to build a new Turi T Small, if we need to build a new Stark Elementary, we may need to be really looking at some of that, and then, again, bringing in the best and brightest. But I think we, we, we've never asked who would like to work in some of our low-poverty schools. It does, it takes a unique person. But I will tell you, based on our meeting in Tampa and listening to the superintendent in Miami, it can be done. It really can be done, but we gotta find people, first of all, who love kids and really understand that regardless of their race and where they're from and their socioeconomic, they can learn. And if we believe in them, I think we could eliminate some of the busing just by getting and, and finding people who love children. And that is a task, and I know that's hard. Everybody's looking for teachers. Many people are getting a profession because they need a job, not because they love children. And so, we do, we have several obstacles, but I want to go back and let you finish. Thank you.
I appreciate all of the comments that we're hearing because certainly, we share the concerns that we've heard, and we also know that there is no single answer to the issue, which I think has also been expressed. And what has evolved, and I too am very interested in the articles, and there's a lot being written about this, and there's communities out, outside of our area that are really spending time on this issue and trying to determine the path that they want to take. But the underlying thing for us to consider as we move forward is, or the thing that I always come back to when I think about this, is ultimately, the families that are impacted, they may or may not agree, and the issue of choice, I think, needs to be part of how we look at this because there is no right or wrong on this. I want to take you to the next slide and talk about something that is going to need to come forward at some point. And while we, we look at this one, I am going to take the time to show the board what Mr. Aiken and I, and of course, other staff, but, you know, we, at the time, we were in the leadership positions, how we tried to address some of what I've heard from the board as it relates to creating zones so that our children can attend a school that's not only closer to them, but also with the children that are in their neighborhood. So, the next couple slides, two slides, I believe, reflect some of the issues that are associated with us evaluating the Osceola and Ortona consolidation associated with the Osceola Master Plan Project. And a couple of things surface when we are looking at attendance zones in this area. So, let me focus first on the middle school issue, and then the second slide will be our high school. But it's the middle school issue at, in, for Osceola. Well, first, I should mention that both Osceola Elementary and Ortona Elementary have attendance zones that are in. have attendance zones that are in the core area of Daytona Beach. Um, Eric, if you could, please, the, the northernmost zone, which is just off of Mason. That one, yeah. That zone is, uh, is Ortona. Uh, the one that is just off of Orange Avenue to the south, that is Osceola. Um, what is somewhat interesting, um, when I looked at the different attendance zones for the entire subject area, is that on the beachside for Osceola Elementary, all of the beachside that is zoned to Osceola goes to Orman Beach Middle School and Seabreeze High School. The zone for Osceola that is in the core area, south of Orange Avenue, goes to Campbell Middle School, which is the closest middle school, and goes to Spruce Creek High School. Now, when we look at Ortona, uh, the Ortona beachside area is a much smaller area than Osceola, um, and it's interesting. Uh, the area that is south of Plaza Boulevard, which is, uh, one of the roads that Seabreeze High School um, bounds itself, um, that Ortona area from Harvard to Plaza is zoned to Orman Beach Middle School and zoned to Seabreeze High School. South of Plaza, the area all the way down to Seabreeze Boulevard is zoned to Campbell Middle School. The, uh, zone that's off of Mason, uh, Ortona's zone here, that area is zoned to Orman Beach Middle School. Now, I wanna take a moment to talk about the middle schools here, because I, um, this was an area where, um, Mr. Aiken and I did some of the comments that, that you just made. This was an effort that we made, because we recognize and share the concerns, um, to make some changes. So, if you could zoom in, please. Um, that area that is, uh, immediately, uh, south of Mason, okay? And it goes all the way to Ingram, bounded by US One and Nova. That used to have, I believe, three different middle school boundaries within that block. That area now is entirely zoned to Orman Beach Middle School. Taking that comment that was made about, if you're going to send children to a school that is outside of their immediate neighborhood, at least ensure that they are going to that school with the children that are in their neighborhood that they're hanging out with. Um, now I wanna, um, if you look, uh, yeah, um, one of the other things that we took the opportunity to do at this time, um, and this was associated with Holly Hill, was, um, the Hinson Zone was a very small area that actually was immediately adjacent to Campbell Middle School. And so, we took the opportunity, um, to change that, so that the area that immediately surrounds Campbell now attends Campbell. And we took an area that is just south of LPGA, um, off of Jimmy Anne, across the street from West Side Elementary. Uh, and West Side Elementary was one of the elementary schools that had a split-zone, um, middle school. Some of it was Hinson and some of it was, um, Campbell. So what we did was, we took the opportunity to create an area, um, that was much closer to Hinson, um, and send that area to Hinson. So, in, in, uh, in the time that we have had to work together on these, these kinds of issues, we've tried to look at it and address it, um, to the extent that we've been able to. But, um, following through on the rest of the conversation, as it relates to, zoom out and hit the next slide, please.
Excuse me, before, before you move forward, go back to the Mason Avenue where you have Osceola.
Ortona.
Ortona. Because I think that's what Jamie's saying, you have carved out, but that entire beige area is actually homes and apartments. So why is it that all of those children within that geographical area are not, if we're gonna bus, bus to Ortona?
No, good point, valid point. All I'm, I'm showing you how it exists today.
Right, I understand, but I think that is the question we're asking, because, um, you, you bring them back from elementary for them to all then reconvene for middle school, versus having them all go to elementary and then let them disperse from middle school, 'cause I think it's more adaptive. And parents are, are, it's not as engaging, I shouldn't say that, but some of them are. But they are not as engaging in middle and high school as they are in elementary.
Understood. Um, and your point is a really good one, because in this uh, evaluation of this potential consolidation, we could have the opportunity to reduce, uh, the number of zones in that area and have them all go to one single elementary and then feed to, um, the same middle school. And certainly, one of the things that we've also looked at, um, some of these families lack transportation, independent transportation. And some of the schools that these students and their families are assigned to are not on a Votran route. And so that's another thing, you know, we can look at, and certainly, um, both, um, Ortona and Osceola happen to be very close to, uh, Votran bus stops. But that would be another piece of looking at, how do you ensure whatever school children are assigned to, um, can be accessible?
Excuse me, yes, go ahead.
So, right there in the part that you have zoomed in on, you're showing the section that goes to Ortona out of there, and I agree with, um, I've hated the whole word island, and you've got the group going to Osceola. And so there's basically ten or eleven more little sections in there going out.
That's correct.
And then, if we even look at it, so, the tan area is going off to Hinson.
These are middle school zones on this map.
The pink is going to Creekside.
Correct.
Is it Silver Sands for that kind of teal blue? And then Campbell Middle. I mean, just look at what we're doing to these kids and their families. And that's been my argument. I, I mean, thank you for, like, cleaning up some of West Side Elementary and, and and putting those kids at Hinson versus splitting them to Campbell. But just even, and I know we're looking at a map and it's not realistic, but just the driving time. Like, if you go down to where you've got the Osceola little group you're pulling out, that driving time, 'cause those, that area is not beachside. Like, they've gotta cross the bridge even to get to beachside to go up there. So, I don't know, it's just, my feeling is, are we, number one, have we made these decisions based on what's best for adults, or bus routes, or, you know, whatever, or building, or have we made the decisions based on what's best for students? 'Cause I'm gonna go back to this, when it comes time for summer programs, all of a sudden, we ignore where we bus them to for elementary, and we bus them to their closest zoned site for summer. So, Osceola kids don't get bused to Tamoka, which would be the summer site for Osceola. They go to Turi T or South Daytona. So, you guys need to understand that, we don't bus based on the islands for summer. We bus for summer kids to their closest zoned school. So that child may have sat at Osceola for five years, and in fifth grade now, they're gonna go to summer programs, and Tamoka is holding it, 'cause we, you know, we geographically rotate, and Tamoka's holding it, well, we don't bus them to Tamoka with the kids they've been with that whole time. We bus them to Turi T or South Daytona, 'cause we bus them to their closest geographical location. We, choice is off the table, so if they've been bused for choice, we don't bus choice during the summer. So we do one thing during the summer, we do another thing during the school year, and I'm not against what we do in the summer, okay? But I'm just saying, it, we, we just have all these different things going on that, you know. Because why do we do that during the summer? It makes sense, they're less time on a bus, it saves a whole lot of money. Lots of money is saved during the summer by them being bused to the closest location.
It just almost seems like we've gotta go back to the drawing board somewhere here. And I, I don't know how, I mean, it almost sounds like, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we're fixing one problem here and that creates another problem there. Of course, we're chasing construction, we're chasing growth. I mean, we're back in a growth stage in our economy now. Um, and so, at, at what point do we look at what's gonna be from, like Ms. Hain said, whether it's tomorrow or the next ten years, and try to look at it in that scope versus, okay, we need to fix this part of town, like, I give an example with the Enterprise, and I know that's not the subject right now, but the minute Orange City puts up all these, you know, sells another parcel land, puts up another two hundred houses, we'll be back here again.
I, I think that's the purpose of this, to give us an idea of where the goal is taking place, so that we can make some decisions. Um, and so, hearing this, I think we will have to make some decisions into just giving them some direction. You know, we really want you all to go back to the drawing board, and I think that is part of our purpose for today. In addition, um, we, we know the 2020 census will play a major role in some of this. We, we need to be mindful of some of that and some of the boundary lines and all of that that will take place. But in addition, um, we talked about choice. The district need to think about having our own choice schools. You know, we talk about competition, we don't have to necessarily have competition. We need to look at where we are and what can we do as a district to provide choice to our families. Because we too have the same right to have our own choice schools and magnet schools and programs. 'Cause I will tell you, for my area, I really do believe we should have some IB or Cambridge Elementary schools. Because you have high-performing children everywhere. So, continue, yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna make the comment, you said on choice, currently, right now, uh, policy two oh three with choice, it's the parent's responsibility to get them to the closest, uh, established stop into the school. A true choice would be transportation, no matter where you live to where you need to go.
Right, but when, when we say choice, I, I think often, you know, we, we look at it as a neg, as a negative connotation. I'm just saying, as a district, we have the right, and we have really the responsibility that we could create choice within our own district, just so that our children can have some flexibility.
And you're right.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I do have a question, thinking of the Ortona, Osceola con, uh, consolidation, since, you know, I've, I've gone through the selection committee, uh, with you on this. If we create a middle school on the new campus, if we agree to consolidate these two elementaries, there is an opportunity to create, because I have seen in the past, 'cause I too have a beachside elementary who has to go across the bridge and goes fairly far to a middle school. Be nice to be able to create a unique magnet middle school at that campus for those beachside kids who have to travel so very far for choice. It's an opportunity for us. My question is, would we then, when those kids graduate from the eighth school, eighth grade, would they have then the opportunity to either attend Seabreeze or Mainland? Is that when they would start to kind of break up and choose? Because, um, you know, some children are coming from the southern part of the Ortona, um, geographical area. Would they be given the ability to choose? Because Seabreeze has, um, the Cambridge program, I don't think Mainland does. So they still have, but they would have to go all the way to Spruce Creek High School for an IB program. So it'd be kind of interesting to see if we allow those students who have that K through eight in a new site, on the beachside, a new magnet program, uh, to have innovation and creativity, especially for beachside students, that then have that choice that they can go either to Seabreeze, Spruce Creek High School or Mainland for their, um, academies, uh, whether it's finance or medical, or whether it's, um, engineering. So many opportunities then that they can be prepared for, they have that mindset to go into the ninth grade.
And certainly in the Halifax area, there is a lot of movement at the high school level, um, for the purposes of programs and choices, that exists today.
But I just thought it, it, we should state about the opportunities. We always talk about our, our, um, land-based, our, our Mainland, um, schools. We haven't really discussed, we don't have a whole lot on beachside, but our beachside elementaries and our students and families are very unique. Because coming from New Smyrna High School, we knew there were other communities. We had a beachside community, we have a Samsula agricultural community, we have a Mainland community. But, you know, surfers and ag students sometimes mix, sometimes they don't. So I just think it's, um, it's a wonderful opportunity to highlight our beachside students and that particular culture and family, socioeconomic level.
I'm lost. So has this, was this something prior to us coming to the board that they had discussed consolidating? 'Cause I know Carl mentioned it when we were talking about it, and I remember cringing like, ooh, did he just say that? Was this something that?
Prior to you coming to the board, yes, we've, we've talked about it, because both schools are extremely small. We've, and they're within two miles, or within three miles, and you can live there and walk to either school.
Yeah, I went to Osceola, I've visited Osceola.
Actually, your visit was after the board conversation about the consolidation. At the budget workshop on June sixth, we had shown three separate projects for Osceola as part of the budget. And, uh, I had mentioned to the board that the project oversight committee had talked to us as staff about those three projects, and that they didn't think it was moving forward in terms of taking this whole community into the 21st century, and it was at June sixth, where the board gave us the direction.
Right, I, I know we talked about it prior, but since both of you've been on the board, we've had that discussion, and one of, and, and during that, we talked about possibly K eight. But there are several elementary schools on the beachside, because we also have Long Street, we have Coronada, and we have what else?
We have Long Street, Long Street, Ortona, Osceola, and then Coronada. And then now, those are the elementaries.
Right, right.
We've got Seabreeze High School and River View Learning Center.
Right, right. What, just a minute, I, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, yeah.
Okay, Carl, and then I'll come to the two of you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, um, that's funny that, that you brought that up, because I wanted to just wanna make sure everyone is on the same, same page with this Ortona, Osceola thing. And just thought you may wanna share with them, again, you know, what, what we, um, um, our visits to the faculty and the field trip that is planned, and so that everybody is aware, I think that would be good.
Yeah, um, the Ortona, Osceola direction, um, that is part of the bond program now. And we have met with both Saks, and we, we, I have met with both Saks, and I have met with both faculties, Mr. Persis joined me at, I believe it was the faculty meeting that I attended. Um, I have had the conversation at that level, um, right before school started. We met with both principals from both these elementary schools to tell them, you know, this had been the conversation. This is how we will evaluate and move forward. Um, on your agenda tonight is the committee selection recommendation to, um, begin the process, um, in the RFQ. The RFQ is, uh, that both school sites need to be evaluated, condition assessments done at both campuses, um, and conceptual plans for both AK five, a consolidated K five, traditional K five, as well as a potential K eight, because we heard that from the board as well, need to be, um, evaluated to determine what can fit on either. to determine what can fit on either of these properties, what is the implication? Um, and I have, uh, invited the, uh, through the school principals, the faculties and the SACS from both schools to a field trip. Uh, it's optional, it's voluntary, on December nineteenth, next week, uh, to Chisholm Elementary, uh, so that they could see the most recent school.
Yes?
Okay, I just wanted to, um, continue with what I was saying. I know a little bit more because I am on that committee, I'm on that selection committee. And so I heard of, um, we had four, four architectural firms.
Was who we interviewed?
Yeah, we interviewed four architectural firms who discussed, uh, the lands. Now, both of these elementary schools, as Carl very well knows, and so do you, are very much ravaged by hurricane. Uh, hurricanes, the weather, beach erosion, it, it's very expensive to keep up. Um, I know because I see all the work that has to be done at Coronado Elementary and Long Street Elementary. Uh, but these two schools are, are, are older and they definitely need some attention. So what was discussed in that, uh, selection committee meeting is the condition of the facilities. Uh, is it feasible to join them? Uh, is it feasible to have a K through five? Is it a possibility for, uh, K through eight? And also servicing those students. We also discussed, you have a very long Brevard County looking, uh, district, uh, like this. One is in Ormond and one is in Daytona. So we know there's some restrictions with municipalities. But when it comes down to it, can we serve our students and can we serve our families? But we need to study it. We needed to go into it and say, is this feasible? Because otherwise, and, um, Mrs. Morrissey went on with board direction from June to start investigating it. Because how do we know unless we hire, um, an architectural firm and also talk to civil engineers, plumbing and electrical engineers, as well as, I mean, I ask questions about intrusion of water, um, how far are they away from the beach? What kind of, uh, windows and, um, paint are, is going to be used? So if we do rebuild them, can we build a facility that is longer lasting? Especially as we deal with climate change. But I do not think we, um, would be doing a disservice to the families on the beach side to address, um, their situations as well.
Okay.
But we had to investigate.
Yeah, just, just to follow up, and I, I don't want to keep beating it up, but, uh, we, we just wanted to go slow with this, because the rumors were starting to come out in like August. And so when I, when I was asking, you know, folks about it, they, oh yeah, they, the, the school boards already made up their mind, and I'm just like, no, you know? So I thought, you know, we better get out in front of this, you know, and hire a firm to study both of the sites and go to, go to the faculties and the SACS and ask, let them ask questions as many, as often as they wanted to, just to let them know that, uh, uh, just a couple of things, you know, Osceola was built in fifty-five, I think Ortona was fifty-one. Um, Ortona's what, about ten acres and Osceola's thirteen?
Eleven and thirteen.
Uh, you know, is it going to be a K five, is it going to be a K eight? You know, all those things haven't been decided, but until we get the re- the report from the engineers to advise us, number one, which site would be the better site to build a, a new school, any new school? And then secondly, if we wanted to build a K eight school, is there room? Is there enough just physical space to, to build a proper K eight school? Because as Dr. Fritz knows, you have many K eight schools and you all like leaders in, in, in K eight. So if we're going to do it, we, we want to do it right.
Right.
And to whoever said that about the magnet school, you did. Um, yeah, it would definitely, it would definitely, uh, attract people to, uh, live on the beach side if there was a middle school on the beach side. We don't have a middle school from Ponsonlet to Flagler County line.
So where do they go now?
So they go to Ormond Beach Middle School.
Or Hanson.
Or they go to Campbell.
Or Hanson.
Or they go to private schools. Um, so yeah, so it's kind of a splintered thing. So that's kind of, if I'm misspeaking here, just correct me. Uh, but that's why we kind of do it, just maybe it seems really slow, but I think we kind of learned a, a li- little bit through the years here, and let's just take it slow, make sure everybody is en- en- engaged and can ask their questions and, you know, the board hasn't made a final decision and everybody can get a chance to weigh in on it. So I just wanted to offer that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
Okay, so granted, Mr. Cologne and I are newer and you guys had discussion about this prior to us being on the board. And maybe, here's a piece, I just don't understand the procedures that are followed when you're going to do something like this. But, you know, when it was said during the summer, at, at first I kind of felt like, I didn't know there had been conversation, just because of the way you said it, Mr. Persis at the meeting, you, it's just kind of you threw out there, oh, maybe we should combine them and maybe we should turn it into a K. And I'm not against any of that, okay? My concern is, is that I've heard coming out of that community about the SAC meetings and the faculty meetings. And I didn't know that we were going in to talk to the SAC teams and the faculty team, faculty, and just tell them this was what was happening, because we hadn't made a decision. And there's a difference between saying this is what's happening and, oh, by the way, we're already selecting architects and all that. And then we come back here today and we're going to vote on this later this afternoon. And yet now we're kind of having a conversation that it's reality. Maybe it's just me, but it's like, and I didn't understand the procedure steps when we want to do something like this, but it kind of seems out of order for me that we would walk into a SAC meeting and say, at Osceola at a SAC meeting, here's what's happening. You know, we're going to combine you and Ortona before a decision really has been made. And, and we really didn't talk about it much as a board, it was just kind of a statement, and I'm not against it.
No, 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 I understand, but I, I, I think you got a misconception. I believe, and, and I, and I'll let you speak, but I, I think we went, because I know my principal contacted me about what they heard at the school board meeting. And so what we said, or what I said, and I know Mr. Persis then went with Sarah Lee, you know, we're having a discussion, because both schools are in a position that they either need to be replaced or major renovations, and this is the time for us to have these types of conversations, but I turned it over.
Yeah, that's, that's it. Um, we, this gets back to that summer when we were deciding, remember to, uh, renovate Osceola or replace Osceola? And then it got down to, well, who decides whether it needs to be totally re- replaced? And that's going to take some kind of an architect or engineer to advise us and, and then I think once it, once it went to that point that we're going to have to do something at Osceola. And it sounded like we were going to renovate every single building, then it was like, well, why don't we just build a brand new school? Uh, and then it got into that part, and then once we, uh, started, and that's why this first SAC meeting was held, not so much that we were closing Ortona, but we got great news, you're going to have a brand new Osceola Elementary School. I mean, if like nothing happens, Osceola is going to have a, a, a brand new school. So we were getting them, you know, that kind of information. Uh, uh, the, the Ortona part was kind of just like a, a piggyback along that. And, and so then we said, well, if we're going to, in, hire the firm to tell us what we can and can't do at Osceola, we might as well do it at, at Ortona too. Because Or- Ortona, you know, you got to understand, Ortona has two hundred students. Um, Osceola is a little over four.
It's on either side of four hundred, depending on the year.
So, you know, it was like, golly, you know, uh, we don't want to, we don't want to exclude Ortona in any of this conversation. And, and, and that's what we were just trying to do, to make sure Ortona and everybody at Ortona had the same information that Osceola had. So that they all got a, a clear understanding, not from Facebook and not from, you know, anything else, but from Sarah Lee.
Yeah. Ruben?
And so, looking at the minutes from June, what, what it says, Miss Wright, six. Miss Wright requested that Ms. Morrissey bring back the board the cost for Deltona Middle to Moke Elementary and an Osceola K eight. And so, you know, arguably, you know, I don't like, and, and again, it, this is just may be me not knowing how this all works. And, you know, again, I, this is on the other side, I have to MapQuest what this even looks like. Because I've only been to Osceola and I know they have a lot of field back there. Um, but I think that, you know, again, I, I probably would have expected it to have come back. And then we would have talked about it, which I guess is what we're doing today, so, um.
And, and we still haven't looked at the cost, and the only reason we talked about it, Kate, I, I think both of you hit it. We don't have a middle school, and that's probably one of the major complaints that we have on the beach side. We, at one time, we had Seabreeze Middle.
Yeah.
And we closed Seabreeze, well, and they had a seventh grade center. So we used to have a seventh grade center, middle school, and so now we really do need to really have the conversation. And, and like I said, when I spoke with Ortona, it was more so, this is where we are. This is the time that we need to have some hard discussions. Um, it may come out where we have an elementary one place and a middle school another, we don't know. But we, we need to find out from the architects what we can do, where we can do it, and how we can do it. Linda, and then Jamie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Remember our, our policy, and we've, we've gone through this, um, several times. Um, and it's to help educate. And also, Dr. Fritz as well, what we've done. What we did is we had a conversation about the possibility. Um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Persis brought it up, Mrs. Wright asked for the costs. It takes time to start looking and doing the bids and, and getting firms to come in and getting a time set up when everybody can meet to analyze it, plus all of her staff as well. And then what happens is the selection committee chooses the firm, we have a recommendation, comes before the board, and we vote for the firm to start looking into it, pricing it, what's feasible. Uh, and, and in this case, is it the eleven or the thirteen acre? But not only just the acreage, but what is the shape of the acreage? It might be that the eleven acre, the smaller shape, is more conducive for building and for parking, for parent pickup, for accessibility from the streets. So once that's done, so almost a year, six, eight months can go by, nine months can go by, for the study. And then it's brought before the board, again, and we look at it, we examine it, we say, okay, let's go ahead and, and continue. And what they'll start to do is start picking out, you know, start looking at subcontractors, what's the paint? And, and I remember the, uh, the board you brought forth for us for Pearson Elementary, all the tile and the material, and it was a big, huge discussion, it was making it real. But not until we are ready to build, to make the decision to build it, and we have the money in the bank, do we, does the master schedule come before the board? And then we vote on the dedication of the money, and that's when it starts to go.
The, the money for this?
It's, it's, we will have.
It's in the capital budget, this was, the Osceola Master Plan.
Yeah.
Whatever shape it ends up taking is part of your COPS.
Right. We've already allocated that.
The, the issue is, where are we going to land? And we don't know where we're going to land, we need to study all of these different things.
Right.
Okay, so I think where I'm actually at with this, because as I said, when Carl like threw it out there, I wasn't opposed to it. I know where both schools are, I know the condition and, you know, how old they are and everything. I think, and this is my perception, I think what's happened here is we've got three board members that understood what was going on and maybe knew there were faculty meetings and SAC meetings and all this going on. And we got two board members, and you could, you could argue, well, you guys, your districts are on the west side of county, but I don't look at it just as being my district, I look at it as I'm responsible for all areas. And so, maybe it's just communication, which that's been a thing that I've talked about before. Maybe what needs to happen is just communicate, you know? An email so that, yeah, the three of you are involved, because you're on the committee and these are the schools currently sitting in your zones or your districts or whatever, but you guys all seem to know. And I don't, I'm not speaking for Ruben, I just felt kind of left out, and then I got phone calls from people asking me questions, you know, saying, well, they just came in here the week before Thanksgiving and this is what they said. And then questions couldn't be answered that they had either. And so, if I had just not like, and I couldn't answer their questions or anything, because I didn't even know you were going in and doing meetings and telling them.
Okay, point well taken, and so we, we, we can, yeah, that's an easy fix, and we apologize.
And, and I'm not asking for apology.
I understand, but I, I understand, because that happened, I, I don't care what the issue is, sometime they'll call us and I'd be like, I had a slightest idea what you were talking about. So I, I get it, I get it. Okay. Any other? You can continue.
How about if we moved to another part of the county?
That sounds like a winner.
Five minute break.
Okay.
But no, but just explain this a little bit, because I just, if you go back and just talk about what could be, and, and we will not ask questions, honestly, I promise.
Yeah, we.
Go back to the next slide, go back to your previous slide.
Back to the next one.
The previous.
Okay.
So every year, I just wanted before, while you're, I, I gotta jump in real quick, sorry. But every year we bring a five-year plan, capital plan forward. Uh, that's the time when we present that for discussion. Some, some of the things that have been on this five-year plan have been in the works for five years, so we're just not coming up to it. So, uh, some of your board members are going to be brand new with the projects we approved last year, a year before, three years or four years ago as well. So that's a perfect opportunity, I think, for us to maybe re-educate as well. This is where we were at that point in time, four years ago, this is what this board did, this is where we are today. So I just want to kind of bring that out, so something we do, so we got to pay more, all of us have to pay more attention to that when we bring those, uh, projects forward.
Okay, so to summarize the issues that will be evaluated, um, as part of the Osceola Master Plan? I think that's what you asked me, you did?
Yes.
Okay. So the issues that will be evaluated, um, are a potential consolidation of Ortona and Elementary on, of, of Ortona?
And Osceola.
And Osceola. Um, on a campus. Um, which campus is unknown, that's part of the evaluation. Um, in addition to the traditional K five, we were, we thought, we heard, please evaluate a K eight. So that evaluation will occur as well. As part of the workshop today, I thought it was important to highlight the issues of attendance zones as it relates to these two areas. Because the attendance zones for the areas associated with Osceola and Ortona illustrate a number of different issues that I thought would be important for the board to consider. And one issue we have talked considerably about, um, those associated with zones where children live further away from, uh, a school than perhaps the neighborhood school. Uh, and then the other issue relates to a feeder pattern. And whether or not a feeder pattern is something to be addressed or not, again, I, my point today was to highlight some of the issues associated with, uh, a study that is imminent.
Okay. All right.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, moving into southeast, um, we have, uh, I'm going to try and move us forward a little bit. Um, so certainly at the elementary school level, we have a lot of choice in southeast, both in terms of the district's choice program through controlled open enrollment or variances, um, as well as two, uh, successful charter schools. So pretty much we receive applications in this area at the elementary level and we're able to approve. New Smyrna Beach Middle School, um, we don't have, um, uh, what we call available capacity. Now, that school is also in your COPS program. Um, and, uh, ready for some significant renovation. And certainly as part of that renovation, you know, we'll be able to look at some spaces uh, in, in, in more detail and, and address. and, and address not just the system issue of HVAC, but, um, overall conditions of, of the school. Um, but, uh, the, the highlighted area that I wanted to talk about, I really want Mr. Cologne to be here. Take us to the next slide. I know he's reviewed this. Um, do you think we?
You want to take it for us?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute.
Take a break.
We'll take a five-minute. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we reconvene, we're reconvening at our workshop. And Ms. Sarah Lee will continue.
All right.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, this next, um, example, uh, uh, is really a segue geographically between southeast Volusia and southwest Volusia. And the reason why I wanted to highlight it, uh, is not to say it's on our schedule to redistrict. It is not on our schedule. But I think this is extremely interesting and unique in terms of feeder. Because it's probably the, the most un, unlikely feeder that we have. Um, so this zone that's shown in front of you on this map is Pride Elementary. And Pride Elementary is one of our newer elementary schools in Deltona. What's interesting about it is when we look at the middle school zone associated with that same attendance boundary, you see that Pride's zone is split zone between Heritage Middle School, which is very close to Pride Elementary in Deltona. And the northern part is Creekside Middle, which is a middle school in Port Orange. What makes it more complicated, um, is when we look at that same area at the high school level. You see, uh, the area that is Pride and Heritage is zoned to, um, Pine Ridge. That's a nice clean feeder, all Deltona schools. But the area that is Pride and Creekside is now New Smyrna Beach High School. So it's that, that area where we have, um, created attendance zones to three different schools in three different communities. And I, um, I'm, I'm not really sure of the how except, um, I think, uh, cause this was before attendance boundaries moved to my department. I think that this was associated with, um, Pride opening and Samsula closing.
Yeah, I was, I was. I was here then, and that's exactly when it happened.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
This is right.
Yes.
Um, so this one I didn't know about till we got this. Like, I didn't realize the Samsula kids were coming into Pride. I was very surprised when I saw this. So here's my first question and maybe you can't answer it today, but Greg, maybe you can, because you were in transportation at the time. So those kids that are coming to Pride, that are clear over there, sitting between where Cypress Creek Elementary and Chisholm Elementary, like that, really even that top, you know, piece there. How long are they on a bus?
Yeah, so, long time. So the first student we pick up actually is farthest away from Timbercrest, correct? So they're on the bus for about fifty minutes, uh, easy. And we'll pick up everything on four fifteen going up to, to, uh, Pride Elementary School. Then when you start looking at the middle school and high school and how we divide that up, it's a long ride, cause we gotta come all the way back to Deltona. Then back down and back into the schools that we go into, which would be Creekside, and then back over to New Smyrna Beach, uh, High School. So those are long routes. I mean, they are. Some of them are over an hour.
So we've got elementary kids that we're picking up up there in that top part.
That's correct.
And they're on a bus for basically, on average, an hour.
That's correct.
To, to take them into Pride.
When looking at this, uh, area, I, uh, specifically separated between Creekside Middle and Heritage Middle and looked at that, what is actually the Lake Ashby, um, neighborhood. The majority of the kids who are zoned to Pride in this, uh, northern section, that it goes to Creekside and New Smyrna, actually go to some of the charters in the southeast and some of our traditional schools in the southeast. There is only a small portion that chooses to go to Pride. So even though it is a large, uh, a long transportation, um, a long drive, there, there were about fifteen students in this large area out of, was it, uh, almost a hundred? So fifteen go to Pride?
Yeah, fifteen ride for us to go to Pride.
In this, uh, zone that is, uh, looked as Creekside on the map now.
Okay, so I wanna go to what you said. So we've got, so let's just roughly say we have a hundred kids. So eighty-five of them are choosing to go to the charters over in the southeast, which could be Burns or Samsula.
Or some of our other schools in the southeast.
Or the traditional. Or they're going to the traditional. Okay, so they're going to the traditional even though they're not zoned, we don't have them zoned? So they're getting variances that we are approving to go to the traditional? Are we busing them then to, like, are we busing them to Coronado, which they're?
No, not, not unless they're going to, like Greg mentioned, the closest available stop. We don't have a bus that comes out here to take them to Chisholm, Reed, Patillo, Coronado.
Actually, when you say choose, really the fifteen kids that are left, it's not really that they're choosing. It's just they're zoned for Pride and we offer busing service. So that's where the parents are sending, cause the parents aren't doing, those fifteen parents aren't doing a variance to stay at Pride. They're just not doing a variance to stay near where they live or to go to a charter.
True, right.
So there's really not a choice there. We can't just say fifteen are chosen. Really no, those fifteen are going with what we set up and what we created.
Correct, they're following the zone.
Yes ma'am. Eighty-five have chosen to do?
Something different.
Something different.
Because it's better for their, they don't want their child on a bus for fifty minutes.
Or, for, for whatever reason.
For whatever reason.
Multiple reasons.
But then they don't go to Deltona for middle school and high school. They stay on the east side.
Yeah, most of the, the ones that are in this area end up going to Creekside Middle, uh, probably because it has a very good reputation. So why would they choose something different?
Well, no, 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 we zoned them for Creekside Middle.
Correct.
We, we send them to Pride, fifty minutes to an hour away.
Creekside is also, uh, quite a, a bit away as well.
Just north of that, northeast.
But then we, we send them to Cree, and, and once again, it's not a choice. We've zoned them for Creekside Middle.
Correct.
And then we've zoned them for New Smyrna Beach Hall.
Well, yes, it's, it's zoning, but they are choosing not to take advantage of other options.
For whatever reason. But the point in bringing it forward was it's kind of bizarre.
It's where we are.
It's another area that, you know, needs further, uh, observation, discussion.
Like I said, I was surprised by this one.
Right, right. Well, you'll be surprised at several different things.
And so, I found, I found it ironic that I, I'd never heard anybody complain or anything one way or the other. And that's because there's only fifteen who are actually going with their zoned school.
Out of the top piece.
Out of the top piece, right. And so, you know, it's, I think we do need to keep an eye on it, especially with the growth over by Pride, uh, with the houses that will eventually go in. They've cleared all that. And I mean, there's only like seven houses right now. I think they've sold like ten. But it's, at some point we'll reach the two hundred some odd mark. This is a very rural area and, uh, the highest concentration of homes are, it's on the northeast side of that. And I actually had to go back and look at our maps because a lot of this is in your district. Because I cut off on part of four fifteen headed right a little ways before forty-four.
That's right.
So, I mean, you're not hearing anything. I'm not hearing anything. You know, it's probably something to keep an eye on, but.
Yes, Ms. Haynes.
Is there a possibility, just saying, that we've lost some of those students to the charter schools? Because otherwise they were gonna be on a bus for an hour?
Certainly.
I mean, let, let's think about.
Could be multiple reasons, but that could be one of the reasons. I'll put it that way. So transportation is always one of the reasons why someone chooses.
Certainly Samsula is not far.
Right.
From this area. Burns is quite a distance, further than Pride would be.
Right.
And closer to Deltona, uh, you know, it's easier to get Ivy Hon.
And I think many of the families who attended Samsula Elementary, once it closed, they really want their children, again, to be in their neighborhood school. I think it's more so that. And busing, yes, but I, I just think they wanted their children as close as possible. Yes, Ms. Cuthbert?
A lot of the families here, much like southeast Volusia, are generational families. And the kids who go to Samsula, um, Academy, parents went to Samsula Elementary. And I think when the second phase is finished at Chisholm, um, which is next year, I think maybe we will be looking at this in the future to see maybe some of those northern kids going to Chisholm, which will have plenty of capacity for them. So that's an opportunity. But we have to wait until that second phase is finished. And that's just a year away.
Yes.
And that would be a possibility. We could re-look at that zone and be able to rezone that area.
Okay, so let's move to the west. And, um, the two, uh, issues associated with redistricting slash rezoning are. the two, uh, issues associated with redistricting slash rezoning are the two issues that we brought forward last month uh, in November, and, uh, we're continuing to recommend that these would be appropriate for us to pursue. Certainly, the west is a very large zone. Don't need to tell you that, do I? And there's considerable activity, uh, from a construction standpoint. Um, but it does primarily impact, um, the Manatee Cove and DeBarry Elementary Zones and, uh, Blue Lake and Freedom in, in, uh, Deland. Um, wanted to follow up, next slide. Uh, wanted to follow up on some comments that were made at the November workshop and asked Eric to provide you all with some information that, um, relates to ultimately, um, anticipating the impact associated with, um, not just new residential, but enrollment trends. Um, cause it, the enrollment trends may not necessarily have anything to do with new residential, just maybe neighborhoods that are changing. So I asked Eric to put something together that, um, speaks to our student generation rate and, uh, his work with our local governments.
Uh, so what, what I've tried to put together here is a little bit of a math problem, but in a way that everybody can follow. When we're doing, uh, student generation rates, that's for our reviews for local, um, residential development. We do them for a countywide, um, student generation rate. So what I, what I'm showing you is an example of our countywide student generation for a single detached home. It is, uh, point two seven throughout the county, which would mean for every hundred houses, that is twenty-seven students total. And then we, um, would have to break that out into elementary, middle, and high. Generally, elementary is, um, around forty-five percent. It fluctuates a little bit in the different areas. In the west side versus the east side, it might be forty-six one, forty-four and another. But i- it's very close. So out of a hundred homes, we can expect approximately eleven students to be entering the, uh, zoned school. And in that eleven students in the hundred homes, um, I actually, uh, met with the planning staff over in DeBarry, um, Friday, so I could get as updated information as possible. It, it's gonna take anywhere between three or between one and three years to build a hundred homes in one of these, uh, locations, right? I did an example, I went and researched Riv- Riviera Bella when it began, how many units were approved, what state it's in now, and, um, how mu- how many more units are still to be, um, built. So in two thousand and seven, twelve years ago, it was approved for development. So over those twelve years, it had to go through design and plating, and then the horizontal infrastructure like your, um, roadways, sewer, water, uh, all of your fiber optic, before they start construction of the homes. So that usually takes between one and two years to get that done after the plant, the planning stage. They, they've already got their approvals for the number of units and, um, the type of land use, things like that. They're just coming in for their actual design at that point. That, that's gonna take about two years. So a seven hundred, and Riviera Bella was seven hundred and eight, uh, approved in two thousand and seven. That year, from this, uh, specific area, and I'll show you, this, this is Riviera Bella, this far west yellow piece. We received seven students in the elementary school for the opening year of their develop, of their, um, construction. So that was, um, within the first twenty days, there, they had people moving in, right? This year, we have eighty students, um, in the elementary, which is a higher than the two point two seven. That's actually eighty students out of, um, three hundred and ninety-seven complete units. That's, oh, I think that, that was around forty percent, twenty-two percent of the total, um, number of units. So that, that is actually a, a lot higher. But where we're seeing the most of the, um, number of students coming in to the schools, uh, to DeBarry Elementary is in the, um, existing housing stock, places like DeBarry Plantation and, and Glen Abbey. And, um, so DeBarry has changed its, uh, format, I guess it's become, uh, one of the places that people are finding more desirable for families. It used to be a very old place. Not very old, okay, senior place.
Isn't that where Jamie lives?
Where Jamie lives.
Excuse me, go ahead, Ms. Haynes.
I'm gonna help you here. I've been there thirty-three years, okay? So thirty-three years ago, when I went there, the ball field is where Wind Dixie was, and they were just going to build Wind Dixie, which threw the older community into, you know, cause there weren't many kids in DeBarry thirty-three years ago. They went to Enterprise Elementary. There was no DeBarry Elementary. I helped open DeBarry Elementary. So I know this area very well, and what I'm gonna say about Riviera Bella is, um, it's an anomaly, okay? So when you look at it and say, yes, they planned for seven hundred and eight units, and there's still three hundred to be built, and you, we've got eighty kids coming out of there. First of all, the cost of those homes is not a home that most families can purchase. You have to have some wealth to live in Riviera Bella, just like you have to have some wealth to live in certain sections of gated communities of DeBarry Golf and Country Club. So when I came to DeBarry, there was no DeBarry Plantations, no Glen Abbey, no Golf and Country Club, no Riviera Bella, none of that. Yes, it was older homes that were built in the forties and fifties, and that's predominantly, you know, where, and families were starting to move into that area. This is what one of my sixth graders told me, welcome to dead berry. You know, like, that's what the kids thought of it even. So yes, we've got families, but what I'm concerned about, okay? And what I brought up last March when the city of DeBarry approved this, and I meet with this, I know the people at the city of DeBarry on the council, and I know Carmen back even from when he was the mayor and we became a city. It's the apartments that are going in, okay? So DeBarry Elementary at one point in time, cause we built it in its landlocked, and it was our first two-story elementary school, it has never, ever held all of the kids from DeBarry, okay? When we built it, it couldn't hold all of the students in DeBarry. We were sending them to Enterprise. I was at DeBarry Elementary even when we did double, like, we had thirty-six kids in every kindergarten through second grade classroom with two teachers, because there was not enough, we could put all the portables we could put on that piece of property. It's landlocked. You know, I told, Ruben called me and asked me a question about it, and I said, look, where the elevator shaft was in the stairs, we built a building around that to hold more students. We opened Manatee Cove and sent the north end of Orange City, I, I mean, well, the south end of Orange City, back into Manatee Cove. The problem is, we're going to head back into thirty-six kids in every classroom with double teachers if we don't start talking about, cause those apartments, he drove down there and saw them. I keep telling people, drive down seventeen ninety-two and look to the left of the sunrail, and that just gives you a hint of what's coming, and yeah, the seven hundred homes has got approved for Fort Florida, and I don't think those homes are gonna cost what Riviera Bella is costing. I may be wrong on the seven hundred homes coming in, but those are families. So I don't, I mean, I appreciate your, every one hundred homes may get us twenty-seven kids or whatever. That's not, eh, okay, if we were building back in the fifties, like what DeBarry was when it was dead berry, yes, then I'd say we would get twenty-seven kids, but that's not what we're getting now. And we are, we are landlocked, and already we send a huge portion of DeBarry over to Enterprise. But we've gotta talk about what's coming. Now Riviera Bella got stalled, cause it was also during the recession piece. And people could, weren't buying four hundred thousand dollar homes and half a million dollar homes. But, you know, and, and DeBarry is, w- we're a bedroom community to get on I four to go to Orlando, cause we are the closest spot.
And, and one of the things we learned, um, was it Wednesday or Thursday, uh, Florida has now regained its strength of being, um, one of the states with the fast, fastest growing population.
Yes.
Um, we're now, we have considered ourselves fully rebound from recession as of, eh, two years ago. But when we looked at the list of the top ten cities, it is actually Deltona and DeBarry that are one of the top ten fastest growing cities for families. And we gotta keep that in mind. I mean, we, we talk about the east side, we know Brown and Brown is bringing, well, six hundred people here, but many of them may choose to live on the west side of the county versus living on the east side.
Well, you have Amazon coming as well.
I think that's good information. I didn't hear you, Greg.
Amazon is coming as well.
Yeah, and Amazon, and so.
There's several businesses.
And so with people finding it attractive to live in Volusian, that's one of our sticking points. They'll live here, but they'll go everywhere else and work. But it is easy for them to cross over and go to Seminole and Orange County to work.
Right.
And the, eh, the area reminds me of what happened in the, um, late nineteen nineties, uh, in, in DeBarry, eh, especially, but southwest in general.
We exploded.
That was when it exploded, and, and both communities, Deltona is considerably younger than DeBarry when you look at median age. Um, but both communities are suburban communities for the Orlando employment market. And, um, the ease of access, who, whichever person said that, is we have a lot of outma- migration Monday through Friday from these two communities, and we are more affordable than where they're working. So that's what I see happening. Um, what, you know, Eric's comment about, he, he sees a lot of the enrollment increase associated with existing housing stock. It's because these, these are nice communities, very affordable, and more affordable than what they would have closer to where they work. So, um, so in terms of addressing the future, right? Besides just monitoring, um, we did identify the one area that if we, um, approach it now, it's, it's more of a proactive change. Eric identified four children that reside in that total area, um, only one of whom is in the elementary, uh, school at DeBarry. And so our recommendation would be that we grandfather, um, that student. This particular change would be relatively easy for us to implement. We actually spoke, uh, uh, I spoke with Carmen, Rosa Munda, I met with him recently, and Eric meets regularly with the planners, so we've talked about what they're doing in their community with new, and what our potential responses can be. Terms of identifying other areas is where it starts to get a little bit more complicated if we're to pursue more rezonings. That other area that's closest, uh, has many, many, many children and families in it. And I'm not advocating that we approach it, the area between Enterprise and State Road seventeen. I am not advocating, uh, and I am not recommending that we move into that area. I, I don't think that is something that we should pursue. But when we were evaluating, well, what, what else? What else absent, um, uh, we definitely don't want the school to lose its area for recess. You know, we can move, we've identified the ability to move two more portables in, which will give them a total of six, but
That's at Enterprise?
I'm sorry?
No, it's DeBarry.
DeBarry.
DeBarry has no land.
But it, it is a, it's a constrained site, I would call it a constrained site. And then we looked at, uh, the island of growth, which was those seven hundred units that you referred to. And, uh, we, we've looked at, um, I know you don't like the word island, but it's, it's an island of growth because it's, it's separate from everything else that's contiguous to it. And we have done something similar in the Port Orange area. At this point in time right now today, um, given where Eric said this was, I would want to continue to monitor, I'm not necessarily advocating it today. However, um, I would want to continue to monitor our enrollments and see how the economy continues to move and absorption. And that could be another area we look at. I think we need to be careful how big we decide to make Enterprise Elementary.
Well, since I've taught at both schools, um, started my career at one, watched, you know, what used to be the cafeteria become the front office, and then, you know, add on the other buildings, and then I helped open DeBarry Elementary. I, I have a clear understanding of both facilities. I just know this, DeBarry Elementary, we can't go back to the point of double classrooms. When you put thirty-six second graders in one of those classrooms, even though you say, I've put two dynamite teachers in there, you just can't move. I mean, and, and we've already lived through that. At the same time, you know, with Enterprise, um, you know, I was in, I was at Enterprise before Deltona existed and as far as schools, and, you know, we were between twelve hundred and fourteen hundred kids, and the playground was a sea of portables. Yeah.
And that was before mandatory recess.
Correct, that was. And so, you know, I see both parts, but those apartments are opening. And we, we can't wait and say, well, where are we sending those kids? My thing is, you know, you've got seventeen ninety-two is the nice dividing line, and you know, you've got the west side and the east side. The west side has DeBarry Elementary sitting on it, to the east, we do have Enterprise Elementary. I mean, I know what you did up there, cause you didn't wanna touch Glen, like Glen Abbey would be a hole. But you did still pick up as far as inter, um, using high banks. You still did pick up a piece of purple out of that, and that is families in that older section of, um, there. But we, we gotta talk about the apartments. The apartments, they built them quickly. And they're, and they're, and they're sitting across from the sunrail, and there're going to be some families in there where they get on the sunrail to ride down.
Well, isn't that the area that?
The, this is the area we're talking about.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
So this is the area that we're saying we should pursue.
Is it this one?
Point two.
This is the apartments.
Oh, the, the little comma down there?
That's the apartments.
This yellow piece is the apartments.
It's right across from the sunrail.
Blue piece here is, um, called the junction. It isn't in the stage where they're, um, building yet, but they are getting their.
Cause that's Gemini Springs there, which is where we looked at years ago, building University High, and instead it went to Orange City because Gemini was gonna be a park and stay a park. Now they're building out on parts of it, so. But the apartments are the thing, they're getting ready to open, and where are we putting, where are we going? And I know Ruben has some different feelings about it, but my thing is also, you know, how far are we busing them? Are we crossing highway? Are we staying on one side of the highway? What are we doing? But DeBarry Elementary can't, I mean, there's not a lot of wa- I mean, we will be going back to double classes.
So we're recommending that we move forward on this one.
Right.
So going back to what I said before, I wanna see what the potential educational impact is gonna be, number one. Number two, um, it looks really little in yellow, but these are five three-story towers with two hundred and eighty-nine apartments. I think the highest priced one is like twelve hundred dollars a month, so that's affordable housing. I don't know that Enterprise can absorb those children without it being, I mean, Enterprise is an old school. And Enterprise, um, I, I don't know what capacity, so what I'd like to see is what we visualize that capacity being at, are we talking about adding? what we visualize that capacity being at, are we talking about adding portables? Are we talking about, because again, these, we're talking about three law, I mean, there's, these are huge buildings. I mean, two hundred and eighty-nine units, that's a lot. And so if we take it and, and I think, and, and this is taboo, but I'll throw it out there. It almost looks like we may need another school somewhere in between here. Because between Manity Cove, DeBarry, look how much area DeBarry is covering, even though a lot of the stuff to the left is, is rural. But I don't know that Enterprise can pick that up. And I think it's unrealistic to think we're going to have thirty elementary school students. So I'd like to see what our other nearby apartment buildings look like and how many students do we have in there in each grade? And so again, we can take that offline.
So multifamily places, it's, uh, twelve per one hundred unit, so if you look at it.
As an average.
As an average.
But we have some apartments in the area that we can get, um, the real student generation rate out of the apartments in the area. Um, this will be a little bit different because of its, uh, you know, what it's being marketed for and, um, its location. But, um, in terms of the whole area that we're talking about, there are no current students in the area that are going to be impacted. So the data we bring forward is going to be, um, primarily student generation rate per units and, um, um, the other data in, in that area. That's what we would bring forward, okay?
May, may I also say, our, our student generation rates were third-party verified and developed. So even though we, we do look at things a little bit differently, we, we have a second opinion that does say that these are the generation rates throughout the, the district. I know that the, um, impression is that there are more kids. And the closer you get to the school, you're going to see more kids per house. But when we're looking at, um, you know, say five miles out, um, that contains most of the kids, five miles out from every one of our, uh, school, uh, elementary schools, contains ninety-nine percent of our student population. So that is our two, twenty-seven per hundred, or that is our twelve point, point seven per hundred for multifamily. So the impression is a little bit different than the actual math when we go back and look at it.
Okay. Ms. Hank?
So, in looking at the apartments, um, you've got the ones there at Saxon, you know, which.
That, that's one of the projects I thought we would look at.
Probably more similarly priced, but you can't look at the fifty-five plus one. Because what you've got at Saxon is you've got the family ones and then you have the fifty-five plus one. They look all identical. And then you've got the set over behind Target, but Target's a section eight and a lot more affordable housing than what we're putting in.
Right.
In DeBarry. I mean, and.
Right.
And the ones behind Target were marketed differently. They were marketed for lower income. Where the ones on Saxon were not necessarily marketed for lower income and the ones in DeBarry are not being marketed as, you know, lower income. So I think, you know, we've got to look at the Saxon piece as more telling of like, how many do we have living in the Saxon? And I don't remember the exact number of units, you know, that went into that set.
But we have that, that information, we can do that.
And we also look at, you know, the cost associated with, uh, what it's going to cost to rent. All of that's going to make a determination on a number of students or families that are going to move in then there based on their income. So all of that's taken into consideration.
Uh, the, um, city of DeBarry actually is expecting this area because of its, um, connection to sun rail to be more, um, professional, um, empty nester type of, um, residents. It, it is one of the other.
Thank you for not saying senior citizen.
So, and then the last one that, um, is the one that we've started a couple of years ago, um, Citrus Grove and George Marx. And, uh, we would like to finish that one up. We want to, um, do another notification, another community meeting, um, but prepare ourselves for the opening of George Marx. Um, so, uh, in discussing, uh, in discussing moving forward, um, we would anticipate bringing forward, um, the formal recommendations to the board in February. Um, just so that you know, uh, whenever we do a redistricting, it is considered a rule change. So the same way you all, whenever you're amending one of your policies and you have a request to advertise and then whatever thirty days or forty-five days, whatever the number of days is later, you'll have your public hearing and your final action. That's how, uh, the board processes on redistricting. So we would bring something forward to you in February, it'd be the request to advertise for both these. And then come back to you, whatever the meeting is that makes sense, uh, in accordance with legal ad requirements.
Any questions about the last slide?
I, I mean, Delance known this, I mean.
Right.
That part was George Marx, they shifted it to Citrus Grove. When Citrus Grove opened and everybody knew it was going back to George Marx when they got a new school, so.
And we've had, you know, we had a mass notification and we've had, uh, two different community meetings, so we're, uh, and I think I mentioned we opened up, uh, variances to families who might want their children to start at George Marx now. We had a few, I think seven was the number we had, so we had a few.
That was my only concern. And I understand that if they're a fourth or fifth grader and they've been there the whole time. But my concern was bringing, you know, at what point do we stop bringing in the younger siblings? Because what if there's a three-year-old at home and they're in fourth, you know? At what point do we say, no, you're now going to George Marx? Because that's where you are zoned and that's where your neighborhood kids live and all that. So I just, I'd like a clean cut on that at some point so that those kids in that, um, section go to George Marx and they're with their community.
That concludes everything we have for you today.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions? Have we addressed them all? Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, first of all, thank you, uh, great, great presentation. Very, uh, uh, complicated issues here along the way, a lot of things to take in, into consideration. I, I just wanted to get back to the, the topic that you brought up, Chair, uh, concerning, um, the African-American communities, um, being bused all over the east side to various schools. And my concern is for the achievement levels of the students. I think we've had a, uh, a noble ex- experiment, if you will, for the last, uh, fifty years since we've integrated our, our schools. You know, there should be a tremendous amount of data, you know, have black children performed better in integrated schools than they have in their neighborhood schools? Do black children perform better when they have a black teacher in their life, particularly kindergarten through third grade, um, than those, uh, uh, black children that never see a, a black teacher? Um, I, I, you know, I, I just think these are things that we can't deny the fact that we haven't seen the level of, of achievement uh, that we would like. And I know there's a lot of factors that, that to consider. Uh, however, um, as we tend to look at this thing, uh, globally now, uh, you know, it, it, to me, it seems like, uh, it may be the time uh, to, uh, really, uh, address this issue and say, and just ask ourselves, are we helping these children? Uh, or are we hurting them by, by sending them, um, to schools far, far away from, from their neighborhoods? I mean, if it could be proven that they were at a distinct ad, advantage over their peers who are still in their neighborhood at their neighborhood school, but they're not, you know, these children who we send to, to Moca or Osceola or wherever, and they're doing way better there than their counterparts. Um, then, okay, well, then we have some kind of argument. I would still say it's not so much the school, it's always the teacher that the, that, that, that the child has. But I, I just think if we get Dr. Fritz involved in, in this and certainly ways to incentivize our, our best teachers, um, to stay in our neighborhood schools, uh, particularly, um, African-American teachers. I, I, I think, I just think it's time that, um, we need to ask ourselves, should we continue doing the same thing that we have been doing? Particularly if the results aren't what we all wish they would be. So, um, uh, again, I'm not, I'm not placing blame, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. Uh, I'm just saying this may be a time to, uh, relook at that. And I know it's a huge, huge issue and a lot to consider. But I would certainly not be opposed to having that discussion and not be opposed to putting more money into, uh, Stark or Charity Small or, uh, whatever. I mean, you know, we've got to put the money in and, uh, of course, you know how I feel, I'm not opposed to paying teachers more to work in, in, in neighborhood schools too. I mean, we, we've got to do something to kind of turn this thing around and, and, and I'd be open. And I know that you'll, you're going to want to weigh in at some point in this.
The issue, I, I just want to be clear, um, the issue is a Halifax area issue.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the issue that you pointed out right at the start, yeah. I, 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 I know that, I know that. I just, I just thought this was the time since, since you touched on it, Madam Chair. Otherwise I wasn't going to bring it up, but since you opened the door a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Persis, for that, because I, I agree with your sentiment. I think we just need to look at some data and verify how children are performing and how they are learning and what can we do, again, keep them in their communities? Because I believe if we just look at that and not just on the east side, I think in our entire county, we could save money on transportation, that could now help bring monies back to the classroom. And that's the way, how do we bring money back to the classroom? Any other comments, colleagues? Okay.
While we're going, you, you said something that to, we need to, uh, make sure we have the best teachers. But we also have to define what is a best teacher. Um, a teacher can come in with high grades, scoring very well in the general knowledge test, but not reach children. I want the best teachers to be able to inspire, um, motivate children to learn. And it's been said, I don't, it's, it's probably an old data point, but your best teachers are your high C B people. Um, it's people who can reach children. And as long as we can reach the kids, uh, and inspire them to be more than what they, they themselves think they can be, those are our best teachers. So we need help, um, with finding those teachers because a lot of times, and I know I'm one of them, we do not advocate ourselves. You know, we just do the job, we keep our heads down, we do the job and we do not really ever pat ourselves on the back. And it's, it's talking to other people within their own school community. Um, and it's those who say, yes, I want to give more, but also those same teachers need to receive more. And it's not just in money. Money definitely helps, it pays the bills, but it's a, a pat on the back from their administrators. It's an opportunity to go to extra professional development. It's an opportunity especially for teachers, we have a lot of couples who are all teachers in our, in our, uh, community. It would be lovely to have them be able to send their children to our extended day at a, at a reduced rate, especially when we are talking about Volusia County, um, teachers. Some incentive for them to stay, for them to encourage to work to schools. And sometimes they may live in a neighborhood and have to, their children go to a neighborhood school, but then they teach across the county. So we have to make sure that our, our employees are in, especially when they have younger children, are teaching in an area that they too can support their own kids, not just the children they have in the classroom. But I think by defining what our best teachers look like, I think that would be a huge step and that can only move us forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And so now, Dr. Fritz, now that you've heard all of our views, I, I want to hear from you and, um, I'm turning it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to thank Greg, Sarah Lee and Eric. Um, I will, I'll share some of the challenges that you pointed out, uh, they shared with me this week as well as we were going through this, uh, pointing out that these are areas to pay attention to. So I want to make sure that I do a comprehension check with you a little bit and make sure that I heard some things. Um, we, we believe as a, a school district that children have the right to go to their neighborhood schools. I heard that very loudly and clearly. And, uh, when feasible, we should be looking at holding neighborhoods together so that, uh, when we're looking at apartment complexes and areas that we're not dividing that up and so that children can go to school, come home and, and be in that community. I also heard, uh, a proponent for more choice opportunities in our district. It may, uh, absolutely, uh, help with some of this. And so I will share with you that we already have plans for a huge choice fair next November, um, as part of our initiatives in, in this district. So would love to share more with you as we get closer to that, but that will certainly be something that we highlight our, our specialty programs. Uh, the other thing that I heard is that when we make these decisions, we really want to look at the data. We want to look at demographic data, we want to look at student performance data. And that's something that as we bring these recommendations for, forward, we want to see how our schools are going to perform. Recognizing that that is also a moving target because we're dealing with families that move around. Um, bus times were something that you mentioned. As we look at this, how long are our students actually sitting on a bus and, and moving around our county? Um, and I, I will share with you is your, what you're really talking about is the redistricting of elementary schools. And it may even be so, uh, that once we do that, we look at middle and high. And this is a long process. Um, I, I will share with you with, with forty-five elementary schools, that's not something you do um, in, between this meeting and next. And so, um, what I would want to do is work with staff and make sure that we developed a timeline and shared that with you and what that would look like. And here's what I think is really important, when you're talking about redistricting, it's really the exception, not the rule. The majority of our students are probably in the right school where they should be. And they would stay because you don't want to create a mass panic that every family and members of our, our community thinks that their students are moving around the district. What we're talking about is allowing those students to go back to those core beliefs, be back where, in their neighborhoods and be able to go to schools, um, where their friends go and in their community so that we have that community feel. So one of the things that I'll do with staff is I'll, I'll meet, I, I was typing notes as we were going through this. And what I'll share with them, um, is those expectations and we will develop a timeline and then bring back a recommendation. But it is a domino effect. Once you start to redistrict at the elementary, then it will bleed up to the middle schools and to the high schools. Um, but that is a long process. And just to give you an idea of my history doing that, that's at least three years because you're dealing with three levels. So it takes about a year to get right for one level at a time. Madam Chair.
Any questions, comments for superintendent? Anything else from our presenters?
I'll see you later.
Thank you very, very much for the information and, um, we are adjourned.